Well, come to order, please. This is a duly authorized meeting of the Joliet zoning Board of Appeals. In our capacity, we hear petitions for relief from the strict provisions of the city ordinance. In matters of this type, the decision of the board is final. We expect that it does not go to the mayor or the city council for any further action. If you disagree with our decision, you have recourse in a court of record. We also hear petitions for variations of land use. In matters of this type, we act as an advisory board to this mayor and city council, making a recommendation either for or against it. The final decision on land use is made by the mayor and the city council. The secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Darley?
Here.
Mr. Ferguson?
Here.
Mr. Graham?
Here.
Ms. Nevades? Ms. Powers? Mr. Riggs?
Here.
Mr. Hennessy?
I'm here. And request to digress from the agenda.
We have no requests.
Aaron Elster in the audience? Petition 2015-23, excuse me.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, in this case, we've got, again, case 2015-23. The petitioners requesting variations on the maximum allowed height of a detached garage from 20-foot up to 29-foot to exceed the footprint of the existing home and to relocate it not completely to the rear of the main dwelling in order to construct a two-story, 33-foot, 6-inch-by-42-foot detached garage and pool house. The 275-foot-by-300-foot, 1.9-acre lot currently contains the existing one-story, single-family house with an existing in-the-ground pool and an existing 24-by-26 detached garage that will be demolished. The existing semicircular driveway is unpaved. The property is Zoned R1A, which is a single-family residential. And this case was filed in April. We've got surrounding land uses and zoning on all sides being residential. To the north and the west is R1, single-family city is Joliet zoning. To the south and the east is unincorporated Will County zoning. Under applicable regulations, we're dealing with 47-17.5 garages and carports. The community design review board looked at this project on May the 7th in the minutes I think are available. Under the discussion portion, the approval of the requested size and the setback variations will allow the petitioner to construct a new detached garage and pool house. The requested location variance is necessary due to the current location of the existing detached garage and a desire of the petitioner to locate it in the same driveway point. The size and the height variations are being requested because the petitioner wants to build a three-car garage that also includes space for pool, equipment, storage, a bathroom and a changing room, and then second-floor area storage. The proposed bathroom will include lockers and a shower, and I think there's a floor plan attached.
Are our screens out, or?
Pardon me?
Our screens aren't working?
No, they're working on them now. We hope that they can come up, so we'll beg you to crane your neck to look at what's on the big screens around you.
Too old to crane my neck. I'm the chairman.
All right, the new structure is required to use the material and the colors, and we'll be compliant with the siding and the shingles on the existing frame house. Paving of the existing gravel driveway will be required as part of the new garage construction. The new detached garage slash pool house cannot be converted into separate dwelling space or commercial office space now or into the future. And then we've got the conditions that is being requested at this time, that the detached garage must be constructed with similar siding and asphalt shingles to complement the existing house, that the existing driveway be paved and as part of the garage pool permit, and then lastly, that the detached garage pool house cannot be utilized for separate dwelling space or commercial office space. And that concludes our staff report.
Thank you. You swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
I do.
Name and address.
Aaron Elsner, 2725 Gulf Road, Joliet, Illinois.
Any comments you'd like to make?
No, just we want to replace the existing garage we have. It sits on low ground, so the concrete's all busted. We look to replace it, just make it larger, a large family, and utilize some of our land for the pool house.
Okay, any comments or questions by the board? Anybody in the audience wishing to speak in favor? Anyone opposed? Chair closes the petition to the floor and asks the board for discussion and a motion.
I'll move for approval.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve the petition. Call the roll, please.
Ms. Darley?
Aye.
Mr. Ferguson?
Aye.
Mr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Hi, thank you.
Thank you.
424 Cadence Premier Logistics. Anyone here? Petition 2015-24.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, in this case, we've got the applicant is Cadence Premier Logistics LLC. There are the petitioners and the contract purchasers. The owner of the property is Leroy Crossing Business Park LLC. The location is the northeast corner of Emerald and Route 53. And the request, and there's a series of requests here, a special use permit to allow the sales of truck and tractor-trailer parts, which is both over-the-counter and e-commerce, to conduct a truck maintenance and repair facility, to also engage in the sale of compressed natural gas and diesel fuel, to have a truck wash, to allow gaming video machines in the convenience store that will be part of the fuel sales, also a variation to allow tractor-trailer parking not parallel to the long sides of the principal warehouse, and that's on the southern property that this is a two-parcel development, also a variation to allow the truck dock doors within 50-foot of the building corner, and then lastly, a variation to allow the above-ground storage of compressed natural gas, and again, this is at the northeast corner of Emerald and 53. And under purpose, we've got the petitions requesting a special use permit to allow the sales of truck and tractor parts, as well as truck maintenance and repair, a variation regarding truck and trailer parking locations and dock locations, and a variance to allow the above-ground storage of fuel. The subject site is located at the northeast and southeast corners of Emerald Drive and Route 53 in the Leroy Crossing Business Park. The special use permit and variations will accommodate a new multi-use truck maintenance fuel sales, convenience store, and video gaming venue located on parcel one, and an industrial warehouse trailer parking lot on parcel two. A site plan, building elevation views and floor plans are attached. Cadence Premier Logistics plans to relocate to Joliet from Alsup. The Joliet site will become the company's headquarters for the corporation. Due to site limitations resulting from the existing pond locations and configurations of the existing parcels, tractor-trailer parking cannot be located on the site according to the ordinance regulating parking of semi-trailers in the industrial districts. Additional variations are required as well. Under site-specific information, the site is part of the Leroy Crossings Business Park Unit 21, resubdivision number one, Lot 9. It's approximately 12 acres and it's Zoned I-1 Light Industrial. Lot 4, which is parcel two, is 32.54 acres and it's Zoned B-3 and I-1. The plant commission will be reviewing the preliminary and final plans of the Leroy Crossing Business Park concurrent with this request, or these requests, I should say. A reclassification of the 5.5 acres, which is part of Lot 9, is also under review by the plant commission at this time. Surrounding land use and zoning is in the vicinity, include undeveloped Zoned I-1 to the north, undeveloped residential unincorporated Will County B-3 to the south, undeveloped I-1 to the east, and commercial agricultural and residential undeveloped Will County Zoned B-3 to the west. Applicable regulations, we're dealing with 47-14.2A, special uses in all industrial districts, 47-17-17N, accessory parking of semi-trailers in industrial districts, and then lastly, 47-17.10, which is the outdoor storage and waste disposal. Comments under city public utilities? We didn't have any subsequent comments outside of what would be reviewed on the plan. That'll go before the plant commission. And then for the discussion portion, we've got the proposed scope of the development is attached, and that was from the Joliet Land Use Committee, which reviewed this on March the 24th. The petitioner requests the following special use and series of variations to meet the requirements of the project, and they're listed there, special use to allow the sales of truck and tractor-trailer parts, over-the-counter and e-commerce. Number two is a special use permit to allow the maintenance of the truck, trailers, and tractors. Number three is a variation to allow the tractor and trailer parking not parallel to the long sides of the warehouse. Number four is a variation of the maximum number of tractor and trailer spaces at the site. Number five is a variation to allow the truck docks within 50-foot of the building corner. Number six is a variation to allow above-ground field storage, and then lastly, a variation to allow the video gaming in association with a convenience store. Adequate off-street parking, stormwater detention, and landscaping are provided at the site. And that concludes our report.
Yeah, before we proceed on this, I'm going to refer back to an article that was in the paper, about a week or 10 days ago, stating that, and it also states here in our enclosure, that the land use committee made a favorable recommendation for approval of this. But then later on, I understand that the majority of that board made some statements, again, that was stated in the paper, that they were reconsidering their approval because they had other considerations and wanted to make some changes. My question is if we should possibly table this, or if this is the final package that's going to be presented to the city council, is that what we're voting on today, or are there going to be some changes down the road that we don't know about?
Well, we could let the petitioner address this, but I would like you to know that, you know, they made a presentation to the land use, they made a presentation to the staff, and it's always been consistent in what the request was, that I know for a fact that you need the, I know the concern was over the sale of diesel fuel and the video gaming.
The video gaming is state-controlled. We have no control.
It's the video gaming is state-controlled, and also to be able to use compressed natural gas, you need diesel fuel to spark the combustion.
It can't be separated, can it?
It cannot be separated. So when we look at this, we look at the compressed natural gas sales and the diesel sales as being more of a, I guess I'd call it like a subscription. You're going to have specific users that are going to seek out this location because they do have compressed natural gas. And in the interest of trying to serve all their needs at that one location, that's why diesel fuel sales is very important to them. I think the concern over a couple of members of the land use committee is that we would be encouraging another gas station in this general vicinity, but I think what we're dealing with here is the ability of the company to service the needs of the, I guess what I'd call them, the subscription members, the people that need compressed natural gas will also need diesel fuel to make that thing viable.
It's also my understanding that there's some concern about traffic and traffic lighting. Now, IDOT normally, under their procedures, does not advocate any signage until after the project is completed and the need is required, that you can't push them into putting that up prior to the construction. Is that true?
Yeah, that's been one of the concerns, is that there's some folks that believe that we should have signalization in place before we go through with any, allow any of these developments, but that's not the way it works. Right now, Emerald Drive has zero traffic on it. IDOT will not give us a permit to build signalization at this point in time. What they're going to do is they're going to, they tell you, go ahead and approve your projects, build these projects, and then when traffic warrants the signalization project, we'll study it and then we'll issue the permit at that point in time. That could be a couple of years down the road. It might be longer than that. It depends on how fast this property develops, and it depends on the usage on Emerald Drive out onto 53. So at this point in time, we have had discussions with IDOT, we've had a series of meetings with IDOT. We also have a letter of intent or interest where IDOT has a funding program where they will fund up to 100% of the intersectional.
Well, let's not do the whole thing before we let them decide.
Okay.
I see our legal counsel here. Do we have any problems with this, or is this the way it's going to go before the city council? If it's approved or disapproved.
Well, city council didn't review the seven points that Mr. Haller just mentioned.
But the land use committee made a recommendation to the council. Does that usurp our opinion here?
No, because they didn't look at the items that you're reviewing.
Okay, so you're satisfied with this?
I am.
Okay. We did most of your presentation for you.
No, continue.
You guys want to sit down?
Sure.
Okay, just where the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
Yes.
And your names and addresses?
John Dunback, 5823 Woodland Drive, Western Springs, Illinois.
Rocky Kaler, 619 North Eagle, Naperville, Illinois.
Okay, did we cover everything, or is there something you want to talk about here? Go ahead.
You guys covered it all. Great job.
Any comments you'd like to make?
Oh, I think all the points were covered.
Yeah.
Not getting paid by the hour, then, okay. Any comments for the board? And there's, is there any request or consideration by the board to table this for any reason? Anyone? Okay, let's proceed. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, are you all together or separate, or? Okay, sir, do you want to come up? And I'm going to advise the other people that want to speak, if the comments he makes are the same you're going to make, don't come up here, because I'm just going to have you sit down. I'm not going to listen to repetition of the same facts. Do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law, sir?
Yes.
And your name and address?
Randall Early, 1613 Middle Tree Road in Sugar Creek. This facility, we're almost at the saturation point now on 53 with trucks. It's difficult to get out of Red Bud on the 53. It's very difficult. You know, many times I've done that, and it's a problem already. And this facility seems to me is going to draw so many more trucks there. I mean, we're at the saturation point now. When is the tipping point? And another thing is, will there be any restrictions on idling trucks because, you know, a day without wind and that's going to create quite a bit of exhaust in the air, and it's going to make the air around that area not very good to breathe. You know, that's our health. And I'd like to see if there'd be, if this thing finally gets approved, if there's going to be some heavy restrictions put on idling trucks there, you know, so you can't just sit there and idle forever. This is a matter of public safety, public health, and I think that should be addressed. And another thing while we're at it, this is just a little bit off, but on Red Bud at 53, if we're heading north, you know, and there's those, these trucks, a lot of them, you can't not regulate the behavior of individual truckers. Right there, I mean, somebody can barely read their license plates, they're so close to you. And if you're heading north and you got to turn east on the Red Bud, there's no street light there. And I lived there for eight years, and I still can't find the street. And there it is, at the last minute, and you got to put your brakes on, and this is an accident waiting to happen. As a matter of fact, I'm astounded that nothing has happened on that road in that area for now. And if this eventually gets approved, we need a street light at that location to mark that road at Route 53 so you can see it. Put your turn signal on ahead of time so people behind you, trucks and whatnot, know that you're going to turn, because all of a sudden it just, it's on you. And you either got to turn real fast or hit the brakes to get it in there, you know. That's problematic. I found that to be the case personally, coming from Wilmington, coming up 53 many times. And these things should be addressed, especially the unclean air, and especially the truck density. This is going to be ridiculous now. It's already ridiculous, you know. There's only two main entrances in and out of Sugar Creek, and actually, three, but the two in that, in the southern area there. And it's difficult now to get out and mix with traffic, you know, dovetailing with traffic at the speed these things are moving now. It's just going to be an additional problem. It's going to, this is going to be a matter of public safety, and I think it ought to be addressed, and it ought to be taken very seriously by you guys, because people can get killed.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Staff want to respond to that, or perhaps the petitioners?
Yeah, Rocky, come on back up, because these are recorded.
My name is Austin Kirkland.
Hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I want some response to those questions.
Rocky, come on up, and if you could respond to the truck idling, I think, was the biggest concern.
Yeah, that's an EPA concern, the environment.
Rocky Kaler, I'm president and CEO of Cadence. I also sit on the board of directors of the Illinois Trucking Association.
Rocky, if you could speak into the microphones, we could hear you better. Pull that one up. Pull it up a little higher so we can pick it up. Thank you.
And a couple of things, and one I appreciate, concerns about the exhaust.
Were you one of the gentlemen I swore in earlier?
Yes, sir.
Okay, fine, go ahead.
First, you know, I'd like to say that Cadence just received the safest fleet award in the state of Illinois from Great West Casualty, which we're proud of. I'm a little bit nervous here, so I'm not used to standing up for people and the operations guys, so we're proud of that. A couple of things with the exhaust. All of our tractors, the freight liners are less than three years old. They have the new emissions required by the U.S. EPA, and the DEF emissions out of a tractor is cleaner than that of any vehicle on the street with the new emissions. We're also a environmental protection agency, smartway partner, which means our fleet, trailers and tractors are green, and it's very strict guidelines to become a smartway partner with the EPA. Our tractors also have the latest safety equipment. We have lane divergence systems on them. We have accident avoidance systems on them. Another reason why we got the safest fleet award. Our accident frequency for last year was zero. We actually finished second place for the award because we drove less miles than the other company. Really, everything that we do and that we do at the Illinois Trucking Association and what we're involved in is making it a safer world out there. I invite anybody to come by, go to our website, check out the equipment that we do run. It's the compressed natural gas. We're wanting to add that to our fleet. We plan to add 10 tractors next year, which would run that, and that's part of a clean energy component to our business, to run cleaner equipment, also to make sure that we're trying to trend our equipment in the United States to pull fuel that's actually generated out of the United States, to kind of keep things home here. That's really us in a nutshell. We've always been very community-involved in the things we do, and safety is, by all means, I agree, the number-one thing. And we would probably have about 50 tractors, you know, each day coming and going. It's a warehouse operation. I think we're going to add a great component to the area and the equipment that we're bringing. We're bringing one of the safest, well, the safest fleet in our category in the state of Illinois to Joliet should we come, and we're proud of that. So hopefully that addresses the concerns.
Thank you. The question that came up about the signalization, that, again, I think that's IDOT again, wouldn't it be a?
Yeah, I think, I don't know if he's referring to signalization here in Emerald or down at Red Bud where he lives, but it is an IDOT-controlled road, so IDOT is the one who would determine whether signals are warranted or not. If it's another location besides this one, IDOT would also be the one that would have to figure out a project to fund it as well.
And we'll be submitting things to IDOT in reference to the amount of traffic and everything for their considerations.
As a matter of fact, I think the traffic study has already been presented to IDOT, and they've had one preliminary meeting to discuss the traffic study.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, my name is Austin.
Do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth, sir, under penalty of law?
Yes.
Your name and address?
My name is Austin Kirkland. I live at 200 Carriage Lane, Joliet, Illinois. I've been living there 38 years, and for the ones that don't know what I said, it's Red Cross from Ranch Liquor there. And we have no way of getting down where we live, but make a little U-turn. You go south on 53, you have to make a little U-turn. You come back north about 15 or 20 feet to come down fell and run. And at 3:00 in the afternoon to around 4:30, there's no way we can hardly get home, not less than, you know, you can get out pretty good if you're going north. And we've been at this problem for years. We were promised that they were going to put a light there when they put the racetrack down there. And then about the trucks idling, they need to put some type of berm there. They got a berm, but they need to put some kind of fence up there, because we rep next to the berm, our homes. People have been living there. We have a subdivision there. It's rep there next to what you talking about putting all this stuff? And we'd have all kind of problems now getting in and out, and 53 is a disaster. I know there's nothing y'all can do about it, but I can't understand how the city and the county and the township can let these people come in and keep building until something's dead with 53. 53 can only take so much, you know, and that's the only problem I have. It's not about them putting the stuff there, they're going to do it, I understand that. But somebody needs to take a stand and say, hey, we can't go no further till some of these obligations is met, or we have taxpayers that live out there. And that's all I have to say, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Jimmy, any consideration being given to any of the concerns that he has about a berm or something?
Well, the berm's already in place, and this, again, this, I think the apartment complex is up towards the front, so where this particular development is going to go, I don't know if you can see it there or not, but I think it will be adjacent to the apartment complex that's right there at the corner. I think the gentleman that just spoke, I think, is further back into the subdivision, which for now is going to be vacant land until there's some development of that property.
Is there something in the plans to alleviate the problems he was talking about?
Well, again, I think he said his biggest problem is turning capacities on Route 53 and location of the cross-turn lanes, and again, that's IDOT function.
IDOT control.
Out of our control, and I would suggest that, again.
We brought that to their attention, that it is a problem.
Well, they know, and that there's state representatives that represent all of us down there, and I think that they need to talk to those folks with those concerns.
Would that be Walsh?
I believe it would be. Pat McGuire also.
Be in touch with him and tell him about the concerns that these people have and that we need some help in alleviating those problems.
And I think they're all very aware of it.
Okay, thank you. Who was the other objector?
I was the other one, thanks.
Do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
I do.
May I have your name and address?
Hi, I live at 617 Sugar Creek Drive, Joliet. We've been there since 1980.
Name, your name, please.
Pardon me?
Your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Liz Sodick, S-O-D-I-C, 617 Sugar Creek Drive, Joliet, Illinois, 60433. We've lived in that area since 1986 or '87. Everyone understands that in this day and age with very bad state funding, the economy is uncertain, a project that Mr. Kaler is talking about bringing is really very attractive, and a municipality is almost, would be derelict to not approve it. The concerns we have is, how many acres is this project going to be on? Did you say 32 and 5.5?
Yeah, there's two different amounts.
Right. The 50 tractor-trailers are going to be accessing the 32 acres? I'm just kind of comparing the effect of the traffic from CenterPoint Properties, which has, which has added, I think, 3,500 trucks per day and has 2,500 acres, and has the truck traffic, I believe the statistics I've looked at, have been between 3,500 and like 4,500 trucks a day going in and out. And that computes out to be about .71 trucks per acre. How many, how much effect is this going to have in addition to the IKEA? The two distribution centers are IKEA. The IKEA property is, well, the whole Leroy Crossing's property, I think, is 362 acres. How many trucks are going to be accessing and traversing that 362-acre park? We know the effects of the 3,500 minimal trucks going in and out of CenterPoint with its 2,500 acres. This is only 362 acres. How many trucks are actually going to be going in and out of there?
I, that would be part of the traffic report, man, I don't know if.
But we haven't, but see, this is, and again, gentlemen, we truly respect and understand where you're all at. I think what the neighbors are trying to express as concisely as possible is that unfortunately, the situation right now is almost untenable. Driving down Route 50, Illinois 53, Chicago Street to get on I-80 is impossible from, I don't know, 2:00 in the afternoon until 6:00 or 7:00 at night. I shift everything in my life over to New Lennox, because we're kind of there on the east side, and I go over there now, and I will not drive on Chicago Street, because it's just, I find it terrifying. It's unsafe, it's terrifying, truck one after another. We understand these projects are desirable. It's just getting to the point where there are too many of them. The infrastructure has not been approved. There are more than one articles in the paper talking about how no one expected the success of CenterPoint. No one expected the BSNF. John Grueling's group, having done such a fabulous job for the whole economic development, that's great, but the infrastructure hasn't kept up. We, you know, your answer is go to, or Jim's answer is go to IDOT, go to our state representative. We don't know who else to go to. We, you guys keep approving this stuff, and no infrastructure improvements have been made. That is the art. It is a sense of frustration, and I also think it is time to ask for mitigation for the people that have lived in this area 25 to 30 to 50 years. Our subdivision is over 50 years old. We were there long before the racetrack and everything else. It's gotten to the point where it is unsafe, and our quality of lives have really been impacted. So we want to know, what are you guys going to do to help us out? That's the question, and we appreciate any help and guidance. And we appreciate any help and guidance we could get. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, we're getting pretty much the same questions being asked. I don't know if anybody with the... Do you have something new to submit, sir?
Yes.
Yeah, do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
Yes.
Yeah, have your name and address.
Eric Spurstad, 740 Sugar Creek Drive, Joliet. I guess I'd like to ask the CEO, when you say you are community-oriented, we've got a, we've got a...
Now, direct, please, direct question to the...
Okay. We've got a, we've got a school, as we all know, that is in Larrway. And I had children that lived there. We've lost some kids that way that got hit by a car. And my biggest concern is all these companies, they say they're going to be, you know, help the community, but they don't. I mean, and I work for a nonprofit that I can show that they don't. I know they're in there for business, but the reality is, is that I believe, like the other speakers in the neighborhood, it is, quality of life is decreased. And we also understand that we need the revenue. But we're not seeing any of it in our area, and I have to ask a very question that may sound selfish, but since we're not in Joliet, it seems that there is no consideration to the other folks that live in Will County area around that. And so the property up against the neighborhood where you talked about the berm, I think that that's my biggest concern, which we've already addressed that. But I truly think that we need to see, like Liz said, how, what are we going to get from this to, with the state, et cetera? But the bottom line is, I want to know, when they say they're community-oriented, what does that mean? And I don't, this isn't the way, but I'd like to know what IKEA's going to do. Now we're finding out some other things about IKEA that we'll address later. All of a sudden, we just see these driplets of things that are coming in and coming in and coming in, and it's overwhelming. It's overwhelming. So that's, that's my say. I understand that it'll probably happen, but I just, we don't have any assurances that the things that these people are saying they're going to do are going to do. So, thank you for your, my time.
Thank you. Petitioner, care to make any comments? No, sir, you've had the floor. Any comments you'd like to make in response to any of those comments?
Again, Rocky Kaler with Cadence. The only thing I can say with community involvement, I guess the proof is in what you've done in the past. So, I welcome anybody that wants to look at what I've done in Chicago and around Chicago with the Illinois Crime Commission, the Illinois Trucking Association. We go back as far as handing out 5,400 coats because our lacker's number was 54 to homeless mothers and their children. These are things we don't do for recognition. We do because we care. So, to answer your question, we, Cadence, I mean, we're committed to that. There's a lot of things we have planned. We want to not just be in the community, we want to be part of the community. We're from the Illinois area, Chicagoland, so this is our home. I worked for years for UPS, a freight company. That's where I learned a lot of my trade. And we, one thing we learned there is, you're only as good as what you give back to the community and how you help people. So again, to answer that question, I welcome, I encourage anybody to Google me, look at me, hire an investigator to look at what I've done. I haven't done it for recognition, and I want the recognition, but we have a proven record in community service and the things we've done in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. I would suggest that, you know, between Representative Walsh and city staff, that some sort of liaison be created to deal and talk to these citizens out there, because, you know, this is development that's going to happen, and they are right in fact that the infrastructure and everything else hasn't kept up to it. It's a catch-up game. But these industries are going to come. That's the world's biggest in one port. The development is going to keep coming, but something does have to be done to alleviate the problems that these people are having. And if you've got their names and addresses, I think between you and Representative Walsh and whoever else is involved, to open up some open discussion with these people to resolve their, their personal problems and work around it, it has to be done.
Yeah.
Because there's going to be more of this stuff coming, and it's probably going to pass.
And Mr. Chairman, one of the initiatives that the mayor reported on to the city council on Tuesday night, and when we had the homeowners' meeting as part of the IKEA project, the mayor also pledged to these people that he's going to take up the project about the high-level bridge from Hobolt Road over the river to...
Toll Bridge, yeah.
The toll bridge. And he once again reaffirmed that. He's, he has had discussions with many of the stakeholders over the past week or so, and he's just made a strong commitment to continue to push that.
Just follow through on that, then.
We will. And the consequences, if that bridge opens up, it'll take a lot of the traffic that's currently on 53.
Is that pretty much of a go project?
Well, it's got to find the funding, but there's private sector funding that's interested in, in doing it, and federal funding, so it's getting closer. With every discussion that they have, it's getting closer to.
Okay, so there's some hope in the future.
Correct.
All right, Chair is closing the petition to the floor.
Can I clarify, 20 years ago, they talked about the bridge at Hobol. I just want to, I mean, it was 20 years ago, the bridge at Hobol. Was it not brought up there 20 years ago?
Ma'am, please.
Again, I don't mean to be rude, but...
Chair is closing the petition to the floor and asking the board for discussion and Motion would be in order, some kind.
I'll move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Hold on, before you do that, though, I just want to make sure you clarify on the items. Mr. Kaler, if you could separate the items that are going to be recommendations to the council versus ones that, you know, the decisions that are...
Is this being presented as a package, or are they going to separate these when it goes to council?
Well, once, because some of the, some of the, some of these points, I think the zoning board is the final decision-maker, others are not.
And if I could, very quickly, the special use permit to allow the sales of truck and tractor, truck, tractor and trailer parts, that is going, the special use will be a recommendation from you to the full mayor and council for their approval.
Well, let's go this way. Why don't you separate the ones that are going to be going to the council, package those into one motion.
Okay.
And then the ones that we have final word on, package those into the second, and we'll call them that way.
And there, and if you look at the, at the list of seven, the first three are all going to go to the, to the mayor and city council for final action.
Renumerate those, please, for the record.
Yeah, that's a special use permit to allow the sales of truck, tractor and trailer parts, a special use to allow the maintenance of truck and truck trailers and tractors, and then number three of variation, excuse me, no, the number three will also go, was just for you. So those two would, would be going on to the mayor and city council right now. Secondly, the second grouping would be a variation to allow tractor, trailer parking, not parallel to the longsides of the warehouse, the variation of the maximum number of tractor, tractor and trailer spaces at the site, a variation to allow the truck docks within 50 foot of the building corner, a variation to allow above-ground fuel storage, and then a variation to allow the video gaming in association with convenience store. So those five items would be going to, would be under your purview only. The first two would be going on to the mayor and council.
Okay, motion would be in order on group one.
I'll move for approval.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve those items included in group one. Call the poll. Poll the, poll the board, please.
Mr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Ms. Darley?
Aye.
Mr. Ferguson?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye. The motion would be in order for those included in the second group, which would be a final decision by this board. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve all the roll.
Mr. Ferguson?
Aye.
Mr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Ms. Darley?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye. Thank you. Petition 25, 25, Ignacio Paramo?
Mr. Chairman, in this case, the location is 514 Second Avenue, and again, it's asking for a variation. The purpose is the petitioner is requesting a variation on the maximum number of garages allowed in order to add a second detached garage at his residence. The property is 60 foot wide by 132 foot long and currently contains an existing single-family two-story frame residence with an existing 20 by 20 detached garage, and that garage will remain. The property is owned R2 single-family. The case was filed in March. Surrounding land use and zoning is residential on all sides, all with R2 single-family zoning. Applicable regulations we're dealing with is 4717.5 garages and carports. Community Design Review Board reviewed this on May the 7th. Under discussion, the approval of the requested variation will allow the petitioner to construct a new 24 by 26 one-story detached garage that is needed for the storage of two large pickup trucks and a motorcycle that he owns. The new garage will be constructed with material to complement the existing framed garage and the home. It will meet the required 10-yard, 10-foot setback in order to access it directly from the alley. Paving of the new driveway apron and the existing gravel driveway will be required as part of the future building permit. The existing and proposed garages cannot be converted into separate dwelling space or commercial or office space now or in the future as per the zoning code. And then lastly, we've got some conditions that are being recommended. Number one, that the detached garage must be constructed with similar siding, asphalt shingles and colors to complement the material on the existing residence. Number two, that the existing gravel driveway and the future driveway apron must be paved as part of the building permit process. And then lastly, that garages are not allowed to be used for separate dwelling space or commercial or office space in the future. And that concludes our report.
Thank you. Do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under law, please? Name and address. Lower the mic.
It's 514 Second Avenue in Joliet, Illinois.
Any comments you'd like to make in behalf of your petition?
No.
Any comments by the board?
Yeah, ma'am, if we could get your name?
Maria Samudio.
Okay.
Did you get that?
Yeah, we've got it.
Okay. Any comments by the board, questions? Anybody in the audience wish to speak in favor? Do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth, sir, under penalty of law?
Yes.
Name and address.
Robert McNair, 512 Second Avenue. I don't really have a problem as long as it doesn't impede into the driveway. It's a shared driveway. They have four feet of my driveway.
Is, is there any encroachment on it now of any kind?
None yet.
Does the design call for any encroachment on the driveway?
It's roughly 30 feet from one garage to the property line that's left.
That would be side yard. Does that encroach, Jim?
Let's see, no, because Miller's on the one side, so your driveway is off on the right-hand side on that image.
Through the center.
And you can see where the proposed garage is, so it should not encroach upon that the driveway is proposed.
I don't have a problem.
That it? Anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Chair closes petition to the floor and asks the board for discussion and a motion.
Motion to approve with said conditions.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the petition. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Ms. Darley?
Aye.
Mr. Ferguson?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye. I think, aye. Excuse me. Okay, Ross E. Pope, petition 201527.
Is Mr. Pope here? Okay. All right, in this case, we've got the applicant being Ross E. Pope. He's the contract agent for Salvation Army. The owner is John Boyle, and we've got Oak and Oak Properties LLC. The location is 1395 North Larkin, and the request is for a special use permit to allow a resale store in an existing commercial structure. Under purpose, the petitioner is requesting a special use permit to allow the operation of a retail store in a commercial structure currently occupied by Century Tile. The site was initially developed as Frank's Nursery and Crafts back in 1984. A variation to allow two main buildings on one lot was approved in 87. The variation allowed addition of a small Federal Express drop-off building at the site. The property is located on the west side of Larkin Avenue, north of Ingalls. The site is 22,236 square foot commercial building built on a slab in 84. It's roughly three acres. The site is owned B3 general business. This case was filed in April. Surrounding land use and zoning is commercial service and mini warehouse rental facility, zone B1 to the north, commercial and vacant commercial B1 to the south, commercial zone B3 and institutional, Joliet Catholic Academy, zone R2 to the east, multifamily residential zone R4, excuse me, R5 to the west. And then under applicable regulations, we are dealing with 4713.2A criteria for issuance of a special use. Community Design Review Board minutes from April 15th are attached. Under discussion, the petitioner plans to locate the Salvation Army Family Retail Store at the subject site. Historically, the Salvation Army had a thrift store in the city center. The store was acquired and demolished as part of the Harris Casino Development. Photographs of a typical Salvation Army family store, interior and exterior views in the site plan is attached. The resale store will occupy a large portion of the 22,000 square foot building. The store will have a rear receiving drop-off area for the donated goods. Adequate off-street parking is available to service the facility. The resale store will sell new and used items, including clothing, large and small furniture, lamps, linens, jewelry, housewares, electronics, shoes. A special use permit is required to accommodate the retail store in the B3. And under conditions, we've got some conditions here that if, should you consider approval of this? Number one would be the adoption of the outdoor storage of donated goods in excess of 24 hours shall but not be permitted use at the site. Number two, that the special use granted hearing should lapse or terminate unless it's 180-day clause where they have to get the building permit before then. Number three is that should the property be declared public nuisance, it's subject to a possible rehearing and revocation. And lastly, that the business conforms to all applicable building code and business license requirements now and into the future. That concludes our staff report.
Thank you. Petitioner, do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
I do.
Name and address, please.
Ross Pope, 7th Circle Drive, Fruitport, Michigan. I've attached some additional photos from what you already have had. As you can see from the Century Tile building, it's a very attractive building as it is. I want to make one clarification. There's a side customer service and delivery door and access point currently, which is in your photographs. That's the side that we would do, use to receive donations during business hours. The loading area in the rear would be for truck loading and unloading. That was the only thing that I wanted to clarify. I've given you a cover photo here. I grabbed this one because it's very similar in appearance to the building that exists. We would probably paint the steel awnings on the front of the building red, and then have the single Salvation Army Family Store on the front of the building as I've shown in the photograph. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from the board? Anybody in the audience wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone opposed? Chair closes petition to the floor and asks the board for discussion and a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to approve the petition. Call the roll, please.
Ms. Darley?
Aye.
Mr. Ferguson?
Aye.
Mr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye. Okay, West Jeff Auto Sales.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, in this case, we've got West Jefferson Auto Sales doing business as Hawk Subaru. They are the lesee of the property. The owners are Joliet Jefferson LLC. The location is 2200 West Jefferson Street, and the request is for a special use permit. The petitioner is requesting a special use permit to allow a new and used car sales business in an existing vacant commercial site. The property in question measures 187 by 300, which is 1.3 acres. The property is owned B3, which is general business. The site was the original location of the Ponderosa Steakhouse. A budget rental car business received a conditional use permit back there in 2000. This, let's see, the Ponderosa building was demolished. The Murray's Auto Parts Store was constructed in 2003. O'Reilly Auto Parts remodeled the building in '09 and then relocated to a new building right down the street. The subject site has remained vacant since that time. This case was filed in April. Surrounding land use and zoning is commercial to the north, east, and west. It's all B3 general business. To the south is residential with an R2, single-family. Applicable regulations we're dealing with are 4714.2A, letter G, special uses in the B3, and then 475.2C criteria for the issuance of a special use permit. The Community Design Review Board reviewed this on May the 7th. The minutes are available upon request. Discussion, the petitioner is requesting a special use permit in order to relocate the Subaru-branded new and used car sales business from the current location at 2525 West Jefferson. The move is necessary due to the franchise requirements and to meet the space needs. The move is intended to be short-term planned while acquisition, the neighboring property to the west of the subject site is completed and the new Subaru building is constructed. Parking for car display, customers, and employees is adequate. There's a site plan that's attached within the existing parking lot and is capable of accommodating 58 spaces. Future plans for the existing building could create a need for the demolition, or it could remain as the used car sales office. The building appears to be excellent condition and observed during the site inspection by staff. All areas and divisions, the offices, the service area, the showroom, parts department within the building will be renovated slightly to accommodate the change in use. This will also include the outside renovations such as general cleanup of the site, landscaping material, patching, seal coating, striping, parking of the parking lot, painting of the building's exterior, and then new signage. Under conditions, if the Zoning Board of Appeals were to consider this, the staff is recommending that, number one, that the parking lot be cleaned from all weeds, patched, seal-coated, and striped before their issuance of the C of O; that no long-term storage of inoperable vehicles would be allowed; that 180-day condition that we put on all of these; and then also the public nuisance condition that we put on all of these. And that concludes their staff report.
Thank you. Do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under law?
Yes, sir.
Name and address, please.
My name is Jim Meisinger, 12454 South 79th Avenue, Palos Park, Illinois.
Okay. You're in the process of acquiring the property to the west, is that correct?
That is correct, 2210.
Without the, is that deal pretty much done, or?
Yeah, yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, I was going to say, without the acquisition of that, you wouldn't be able to operate as a full functioning?
Well, it's a, this is a very complicated.
I realize, so the party's involved, yeah.
As part of the purchase of the Subaru store, which is currently dueled with the Kia store at 2525, I believe is that address, there's another party buying the Kia franchise, they're keeping the building, Jacobs has sold the building to them, so Subaru is homeless. So what we have, we have to do is...
No, I understand the process, but I'm just saying that without the acquisition of that property, you wouldn't be able to operate as a full auto dealership. You wouldn't have enough space, would you?
No, well Subaru's day supply of new cars is in the, is in the two-week period. So basically, they get a car on Monday, two Mondays later, that vehicle's sold. So we don't anticipate in having many.
So you could operate even if that deal fell through?
Indefinitely until Subaru increases their, their production capacity, which, based on their plan, by the time that comes along, we will have built a Mazda facility for the current Mazda store at Bill Jacobs at 2051 West Jefferson. We'll have constructed in that western plot, we'll have moved Mazda out to their new location, and we'll rehab the existing Mazda building for Subaru, and Subaru will be whole, sales and service. Mazda will have its new facility, sales and service, and it will be done. It's a lengthy project for us.
Now, the reason I'm asking is there's been some problems with some of the car lots in Joliet, used and new, with overcrowding and everything else, the amount of cars on them. And that's why I wanted to determine, make sure that, that you will be able to acquire that property next door.
Yes, yes, we are in the process of that. In fact, where our due diligence period is going on currently.
Would this petition be subjected to that, or should we proceed without that final ization?
Well, I think what he was, what I just heard was that he could, he could operate in just this property alone, short-term, even if...
As a new car dealership?
As a new car dealer. Just because, again, because of the way that Subaru brings you, gets, gets the cars to, the allocations that you get through the dealership are at a slower pace.
Correct.
So what, we would use a ratio as needed on theirs?
Yeah, yes.
Watch for any overcrowding?
Yes.
Okay.
Keep in mind we're, excuse me, keep in mind we're acquiring 2001, which has adequate overfloated space for extra units.
I can go far back where I can remember, that was the Candlelight Lounge before Al Kukas lost it in a divorce suit. You got any problems with that?
No.
Okay. Do you have any other comments, sir?
Unless you have any other questions, no.
Any questions by the board? Anybody in the audience wish to speak in favor? Is there anyone opposed? Chair closes petition to the floor and asks the board for discussion and a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have motion second to approve the petition, subject to the conditions as stated. Call the roll.
Ms. Darley?
Aye.
Mr. Ferguson?
Aye.
Mr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye. IKEA Property, Inc.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, in this case, we've got IKEA Property, Inc., and they are, is the applicant and the owner. We've got, the location is the northeast corner of, northwest corner of Emerald and Cashel. The request is a series of variations, a variation of the minimum width of trailer stalls from 12-foot down to 10, a variation to increase the number of allowable trailer stalls, a variation to allow trailer parking and docks not parallel to the long side of the warehouse, a variation to allow trailer parking within 50-foot of the warehouse corner, and a variation of the required landscaping from five-foot to one-foot on the north side of lot, of the lot, and that would be for both IKEA lots, or both IKEA units, one and two, and then require, a request from five-foot down to zero-foot for the east side of the lot located, and that should be the landscaping on the east side of the northwest corners of Emerald and Cashel. The purpose is the petitioner is requesting a series of variations regarding truck and trailer parking locations, dock locations, and several variations of the landscaping requirements to allow the development of the IKEA 1 warehouse and also the IKEA 2 warehouse in the future. The subject site is located at the northeast and northwest corners of Emerald and Cashel. The variations will accommodate the new 1.4 million-square-foot distribution warehouse on Lot 26, and a companion 1.4 million-square-foot distribution warehouse on Lot 23 at some point in the future. The site is part of the Lurway Crossings Business Park. It is 67.8 acres on Lot 23 and 65.7 acres on, on, on Lot 26, and then 65.7 on 23, excuse me. Both sites are zoned I1 light industrial. The IKEA 1 warehouse will serve 10 existing or proposed Midwest retail locations as well as customer fulfillment. IKEA retail locations include Schaumburg, Bolingbrook, Columbus, Ohio, Memphis, Tennessee, St. Louis, Missouri, Miriam, Kansas. Placement of the warehouse, of a warehouse on each lot will necessitate variations as listed in the attached petition. The implementation of future IKEA 2 will require the vacation of Emerald Drive in the vicinity of Lot 23, and I think that shows up on the site plan, as well as a request to vacate that portion of Emerald impacted by the project under consideration by the plant commission this afternoon. A preliminary plot of Lurway Crossing Business Park are under review as well for both one and two. Building elevations, the proposed warehouses are attached. IKEA 1 is projected to be under construction in the spring of 2016. Due to site limitations resulting from the configuration of existing parcels, tractor-trailer parking cannot be located on the site according to the ordinance regulating parking of semi-trailers in industrial districts, and then also variations of landscape requirements as well. In March of 2015, the council approved the vacation of the stormwater detention easement for IKEA 1. The city council also approved a preliminary plot of IKEA Distribution Center and a recording plot of IKEA, the IKEA Distribution Center in the Lurway Crossings Business Park. This petition was filed in April. Surrounding land use and zoning includes the series of detention ponds, zoned I1 immediately to the north, undeveloped, single-family residential, unincorporated Will County, as well as undeveloped, zoned R1A, which is further to the north. Land use and zoning to the south includes institutional, the Joliet Water Tower and the Fire Station Number Three, and the Chicagoland Speedway, zoned I1. Land use and zoning to the east is undeveloped residential, unincorporated Will County in some I1 light industrial zoning. And then to the west is undeveloped light industrial, zoned I1. We're dealing with 4715 landscape regulations and 4717-17N accessory parking of semi-trailers in industrial districts. The Community Design Review Board minutes are attached. A neighborhood meeting was held by the petitioner at City Hall on May the 6th. George Mahoney conducted the meeting on behalf of the petitioner, and many of the people that addressed you today also were there at that meeting. And lastly, a whole nother page. Discussion, the petitioner is requesting the following series of variations. A zero setback with zero landscaping along the shared lot line between IKEA 1 and IKEA 2. There will be pavement with trailer stalls over the shared lot line, IKEA 1 and 2. Landscape material that would be, would have been required in the typical five-foot landscape buffer has been reallocated throughout the rest of the site. Also, number two would be a one-foot setback from the northern lot line of the proposed retaining wall, similar to that, that was approved by IKEA 1 project. Landscaping material that would have been required in the typical five-foot landscape buffer will be reallocated into the site. And then there's all the trailer parking variations that were previously noted. The IKEA warehouse will operate 24-hour-a-day business, two shifts, seven days a week. The exact foreplan of each warehouse is to be determined. The height of the center silo section is proposed at 115-foot. The lower portion of the warehouse is one floor with overall height of 42-foot. IKEA will utilize sustainable features like solar panels where practical to generate electricity at the site. All trash is recycled. Pallets are fabricated with cardboard components. LED lighting is used throughout the facility. Adequate off-street parking, stormwater detention, and landscaping will be provided at the site. As major portions of Lurway Crossing Business Park are developed, traffic improvements at Emerald and 53 are critical. Negotiations regarding that signalization are ongoing. Updates will be given, and that concludes our staff report.
Petitioner present? Do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
I do.
Name and address, please.
George Mahoney, 822 Infantry Drive in Joliet. Chair Hennessy, members of the board. With me today from IKEA are Karen Talrico, who handles its real estate and will handle the real estate for this center once it's developed, Frank Houter, who handles the construction components of these facilities, and Gary Holler, no relation to Jim and a different spelling, of, who would handle the distribution facility and its setup. The, the issue today is literally akin to what you addressed before with the first IKEA, and the variances that we are requesting for Unit 2 are identical to Unit 1 that you previously approved, except for one, and Mr. Holler addressed that, and that's that area between the buildings that require that five-foot landscape. And because there would be two buildings, we're requesting that that be varied as well. So there is no landscaping between the building just for the operational efficiency of that structure. But again, as Mr. Holler noted, the landscaping that would be required to be placed between the buildings is now going to be dispersed around the other, the buildings themselves. So it's going to be the same amount of landscaping within the facility, even though we're requesting a variance between them. So we ask if you would concur with your staff recommendation to approve it, and we ask for your concurrence and approval of the variances.
Mr. Holler, paint. I was going to ask if you had any problems with Mr. Mahoney's statements, but unless they have a speaker in the john, I don't know.
I could, I could hear his statements, and I have no problem with his statements. They do, they do have a speaker out, out in the hall.
I hope they don't have cameras. Okay, any questions by the board? We're all pretty well familiar with this.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else with your team wishing to make any comments?
If you have questions, though, they're here to answer them for you.
Okay, fine. Anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor? Opposition?
We just have questions.
Come on forward. And you've been designated as the contact person, I believe, on these anyways.
Yes, I have.
So I'm going to name you as the person best able to articulate the opposition, and you will be representing, representing everyone out there, okay?
Okay. I might have a qualification for that. Mr. Gregory is a civil engineer and is much better at drainage issues than I am.
Well, you can throw that at him, we'll see.
Could they, if that's possible, Mr. Hennessy? All right, I think we just have questions. This isn't an opposition-centered meeting. Why do we need, at our last meeting, and again, I know I have to address you guys, but can something?
Oh, you can address staff if you wish.
Okay. All right, we had 85 to 110 bays. Why, now, this, what is the minimum width of the trailer stalls? Are there's going to be more trailer stalls from 10, 12 to 10 feet? Is this going to have any effect on the amount of trailer bays and trailer parking? Obviously, there's going to be more trailer stalls, because you're making them smaller. Does that mean there's going to be additional trailer stalls? That's one of my questions.
Yes, there'll be additional...
How many trailer stalls will there be?
That I don't know. I'd have to refer to the engineering staff that...
Well, we need to get an answer on that. We really do. I mean, and we were also told, and Karen, I don't know if the logistics people were supposed to tell us, how many trucks were going to be added to the construction? In our last meeting, May 6th, we said, how many trucks are going to be coming in and out of Lurway Crossings for the IKEA project? And that was only one we were talking about. We still didn't get an answer on that one. So I think that's, it's, we'd like some answers on that, please. I understand, so the landscaping, you're just shuffling it around?
Correct.
Because the buildings are going to be side by side?
Correct.
As we understand.
Correct.
Okay, and please refresh our memory on drainage. There is a pond existing there now, correct?
Yeah, and, and all, all this stuff will be addressed at the plant commission meeting at 4 o'clock, but yes, what's going to happen is the two ponds that are sort of, right now, that would be to the west of the current site on IKEA 1 will be relocated farther to the west of, for, for IKEA 2.
Okay.
When, when they get ready to build IKEA 2.
What effect is this going to have on drainage? Have we gotten any engineering studies?
Yeah, that's all been reviewed by engineering, by our engineering staff, and they've all signed off on it. And as you know, when they built, when Ryan built the current detention ponds, it, they, they anticipated full development of the site.
Of 1 million square feet.
Correct. And the storage capacity in those ponds have been built, and it has been provided for.
But we're talking about 2 million square feet now. We're talking about 1.4 million each building.
Correct.
So the ponds were only built for 1 million square feet?
No, the, the, there's, most of the drainage goes into the big ponds that are already to the north of this property.
Yeah, yeah.
They had accommodated all the anticipated growth for all of the Lurway Crossing Business Park.
Oh, I thought I had understood from the meeting, like in 2008 at Ryan Group, those ponds were built to handle up to 1 million square feet.
No.
Could we get that clarified?
Yes, at 4 o'clock when the, because our engineers are not here for Zoning Board of Appeals, they will be here for the 4 o'clock meeting.
Okay.
And, and is, and George, are, is your civil engineer going to be here for the 4 o'clock?
And he is now, so Mr. Holler, if the board would like, you can address that issue now.
Bring him forward.
Ms. Ory?
Sure, whatever, you guys.
Unfortunately, the plant commission meeting's held after the zoning board, it shouldn't be the other way around.
Yeah, I know, it doesn't, kind of, you're approving, and we don't have these answers.
I know, we're doing it ass-backwards.
Yeah.
Come on forward.
Thank you. With us today, and I forgot to...
Swear in your...
Forgot to mention is our project engineer, Matt Kramer. So if he could be sworn, Matt will talk about...
Anyone who wants to answer any of the questions that were posed can come forward. Do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under law, sir?
I do.
Name and address.
Matt Kramer, 1910 South Highland, Lombard, Illinois.
Okay, what are you going to be responding to here?
I will first start answering her questions in regards to detention. All the ponds that you see up on the north of the IKEA site and the two bisecting the IKEA site were originally proposed to detain stormwater runoff for 85% impervious, 15% pervious area for all area that is tributary, which is the majority of the Lurway Crossings Business Park. IKEA 2 is proposing to relocate those long skinny ponds to the west side. The combined IKEA campus is slightly over the 85-15% impervious ratio, and additional volume has been provided in, in the design plans. And city staff has reviewed those, and we have received affirmation on our, our proposed plans. plans.
These all have EPA approvals, right? For drainage?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else?
I can also speak to the number of.
Go ahead.
Truck trailer stalls. Currently, IKEA 2 is proposing 528 trailer parking stalls, and IKEA 1 is also proposing 528 trailer parking stalls. Those are consistent with what was originally approved for the IKEA 1 facility.
And what about the trucks in and out?
That's more of an operation issue. Frank, do we have information on that?
And Gary Holler will address that issue, Mr. Chair. Gary, you're going to have to be sworn in, please.
Do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
Yes, I do.
Name and address.
Gary Holler, 10500 Alabaster Drive, Charlotte, North Carolina.
Go ahead.
In particular, the question about the truck volume coming into and out of the facility, based on what we foresee from a flow standpoint, it's probably going to be the neighborhood of about 50 trucks a day, in and out both, from the facility.
Is that an estimate that's pretty accurate, or is that?
Based on the numbers that we have, yeah. And that number can always fluctuate based on sales patterns and things like that, but a pretty safe estimate is probably right around that 50 number, could be 10, 15% more.
Is that based on speculation or on past experience?
Past experience, yeah.
And when would that, the truck traffic, it would be over a 24-hour period, so you'd have peaks?
Sorry, could you repeat that?
It would be over a 24-hour period, so you would have probably peak times in the mid, in the, in the early morning hours, most likely?
Depending on the logistical setup, that could be the case.
Okay.
Typically, the volume is usually spread evenly throughout the day.
All right.
And in this building, if we're saying two shifts, that 24 hours could be more of a 20 to 22-hour day, just depending on how the shifts are structured. Typically, most of the outbound volume is picked up in the middle of the day, and a lot of the inbound traffic is in the mornings, because that's when the port and the drag carriers are operating.
Correct.
So we'll typically get a lot, a lot of the traffic in the beginning part in the afternoon, and it tends to get a little bit lighter in the PM.
Because I know that a lot of times, it is part of the, of the public meeting that we had with the neighborhood, I know they were, they were very concerned about, about the number of trucks, they were sort of, that was their big concern, but I, when you distribute that amount of truck traffic over, you know, a 24-hour period, you're talking about less than four trucks an hour, most likely.
Right.
In a case like that. And I don't think we ever heard that from anybody up until now.
Right.
Thank you.
Mr. Holler, can I ask a question, sir?
Mistress, come forward, please.
Why do you need 115?
No, no, why don't you, speak into the mic, we have to record this.
If there's only going to be 50 trucks in and out, why is there a necessity for 85 to 110 trailer bays?
Give me the number of parking spaces.
No, trailer.
Trailer bays.
Trailer bays, there's parking stalls, and, I'm sorry, dock bays. Why do you need 85 to 110 dock bays if you only have 50 trucks coming in and out?
Because we, that 50 is an average, and that number can also change based on busier times. We can do as many as 70 to 80 on a busy day and have maybe 30 on a not-so-busy day.
But your minimum construction is 85.
85 doors in the building, yes.
85 loading docks.
Yes.
Okay, there's 85 loading docks, but we only got 50 trucks coming and going.
Right.
That just.
What, are you dealing here with averages?
And on the surface, that, and that's completely relevant, and it makes total sense. From a logistical setup standpoint, from an operations standpoint, we might unload a truck out of this door today, but the product might not leave that door until later in the night or the next morning.
So it'll be occupied, yeah.
So we need the additional capacity indoors to be able to fluctuate the volume in and out of the building without having the inbound traffic tied up, because product hasn't moved off the dock.
Right, that's reasonable. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
I don't know if this is a. I forgot to put them on the list.
I don't know if this is the place to ask, but.
Say your name again, please.
Eric Spurstead. What about sound barriers that are on the north end of the, of the land? I know we had talked about it with IKEA. I don't know if this is the time to talk about what, what is, you know, optimal for the neighborhood, or is it the one at 4 o'clock? The other is that, I've only lived there for 15 years, but we have a pond. And with Ryan and all, and all the runoff, we have pond problems. And I know a gentleman talked about it with IKEA the last time, who can articulate it a lot better than me, but I'm finding out that, you know, there's a potential that it gets, what's the word?
No, click.
Yeah, just.
The construction process happens.
It basically sometimes gives toxic runoff. And if we, I don't know, I mean, I'm just, I don't know if this is the place to talk about it, or find out from IKEA, or after you guys okay it, then we talk.
Anybody want to volunteer for that one?
Well, I do know it, you know, when our engineers here at 4 o'clock, he would be able to address it. I think that Matt's engineer from Jacob and Hefner.
George, you have any comments on that?
Yeah, if we could ask Matt Kramer to address that.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, just announce your name again.
Matt Kramer. About a month ago, IKEA commissioned Jacob and Hefner to walk the site and identify any source of, sources of erosion. We have done that. We have put together a set of interim construction phase erosion control plans that are to be implemented probably in about two weeks. We have bid that out, and we've awarded a contract to AAA Silk Fence Company. So they will be erecting silk fence and other erosion control measures around the site that will remain in place until IKEA physically starts construction.
That'll take place during the Plan Commission meeting? You're going to be addressing that?
We can, yes.
Okay.
That's a silver, so how about we sound there?
And again, I guess for me, is what happens when this is all up and going, and then we find out that our pond gets infected with something? That's, I mean, I understand putting the silk fences around when we're building it, it's just afterwards.
I don't know if there is a guarantee against that.
Well, no one can guarantee anything, but what I'd like to know is how we can mitigate that in the future. And then, I mean, that's in regards to the pond. The second thing is just simply sound barriers. I don't know if that's landscape, I don't, I mean, I'm not a sound, you know.
Acoustical engineer, yeah.
Yeah, and at nighttime, you know, some of us are lower than that, so the, you know, it's, it can, if it's 24 hours a day, there are people that are going to be hearing it.
This has mostly to do with design and everything, so I think the next meeting's going to be.
That's the next meeting, okay.
Thank you. George, you have any final closing comments?
No, I think, Mr. Chair, we've been fully heard, and Gary just whispered in my ear, the truck traffic is about 50 per building a day is the estimated average. So, but you're, we're clear on that with you.
Okay, thank you. Chair is closing the petition to the floor and asking the board for any comments, discussion, and any possible motion.
I have a comment first, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to see Cadence and IKEA and the neighbors all work together and try to convince Ida of the gravity of the situation as far as the signalization and the lighting. And I think you all worked together pretty well, and I'd like to see you take that another step and combine forces between the neighbors and the business, and put some heat on the officials to get this done.
Well stated, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Let me address that for a second.
Irene?
Can I just address that for a second?
This is Mr. Gregory.
Do you have some comments to make?
Yeah, I, I'm Jay Gregory.
Do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law? Name and address, make it quick now.
Yeah. The synchronization of lights, we have a problem, there's a school over here, a Lareway School, I went to it, and there's no sidewalks at that school, there's no way to walk to it, there's no way to get to it but by bus. And the buses can't get out on Lareway Road, and there's been big articles in the paper and everything. If we're going to synchronize the Emerald Drive light, if you went a little farther west, there's a, a road that's just to the, it's a dedicated road, it's a non-existent road that goes into the backside of Lareway Road. I mean, if we're going to start eliminating problems here, if you came and went north out of Lareway instead of south, you could go north to Emerald Drive, and you could have their own light, their own private entrance to Lareway School at Emerald Drive, it would have been controlled by a light. There'd be no problems with the trucks pulling out, you'd have no trouble with the kids trying to go to school, and actually, if you even extended the north drive all the way farther north, Zarley or Zurich, whatever you want to call it, it's changed over the years, you could, most of the students go back by Pedersen Road or to Preston Heights, and you could actually go back to the back part without even entering on the Lareway Road or 53. I think that'd be a real good thing to do as far as synchronizing this light. If you're going to add a new light, you might as well have it for the school, too.
Okay.
I, I think that'd solve a lot of problems here.
Is that, would that be city-state or what?
Well, that would be, the, the school district has had a series of discussions with both CenterPointe and with the Union Pacific Railroad, and that's one of the, one of the things that they're looking at.
Already looking at?
Oh, yeah, yes, yes. And so actually, it would be Emerald extended farther to the west and then loop down to pick up the school. But where they're at in that discussion and negotiation, I'm not sure. But that is one of the things that they're.
But they're aware of these problems, and they're looking at.
And you've got a quarry that's right next door that's willing to give them the gravel.
No, it's a good, good point you made, sir, thank you.
Excuse me, Jim, didn't I read somewhere in the paper, I thought, that they were looking to sell that building that the school's in and relocate a Lareway School.
Yeah, Lareway School, Lareway School District bought, I don't know if it's like 28 acres between these folks and, and this current site, that they've owned for a number of years now. And I think, I don't know, financing-wise, what, you know, what the trigger point will be where they make the decision to move schools and build new, but they do have.
That isn't their game plan, though, to do that in the future.
Correct, that is the game plan.
Yeah.
But then, you're going to, Raleigh Avenue will be right in the middle of all this new industrial, your new IKEA stores.
Well, that's really up to the school district what they're going to do.
It'll be worse on Raleigh Avenue than it is at its old location with the new drive.
I don't remember where it said they were looking to relocate.
You see the, can you crane your neck over there?
Yeah, you can't really see it.
That bank spot that says right next to Raleigh, that, that dark area with no development on it, that's the new Lareway School property.
Okay, but that's.
And that will have no sound buffer to the IKEA, so 24 hours a day, you're going to hear the backup alarms on all these trucks at the school, which I don't think so.
Yes, sir, your comments have been taken under consideration, thank you. Chair closes petition and asks the board for a motion.
I'll move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve petition 201529. Call the roll.
Mr. Ferguson?
Aye.
Mr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Ms. Darley?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye. Moving on, let's see, Impact Outdoor LLC?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
201531.
Yeah, we've, in this case, we've got Impact Outdoor LLC. The owner is Nick Mick LLC. The location is the northwest corner of 59 and Theodore Street, and they're requesting a variation. Under purpose, the petitioner's requesting a variation for an eight-foot by 16-foot color electronic community message center for a future Citya Joliet Monument located at that northwest corner of Illinois 59 and Theodore Street. The location of the sign is on the high ground of the 4.3-acre proposed stormwater retention pond, which was approved as part of the Tower Marketplace commercial development. That case was filed in April. Surrounding land use and zoning is undeveloped on all sides of this location, to the north, to the south, and to the west is all B3 general business. We've got unincorporated Will County to the east. We're dealing with 4717.21 and signs, comments from this government agencies and city utilities. The mayor and the city council approved an amendment to the Impact Outdoor LLC agreement for the network of digital signs on city monuments at their meeting of May 5th. After it was received, the recommendation for approval from the Land Use Committee and the Communication Technology and Information Committee. The Community Design Review Board also reviewed this on May the 7th. There are no comments from the, about the petition. The petitioner wishes to construct a new one-sided 18, excuse me, eight-by-16-foot electronic message center on the six-foot-high stone monument base that includes the Joliet script. The petitioner would like to add this location to the list of 12 sites that have been previously approved. It is the desire of the applicant to continue to construct the 12 total signs as the agreement allowed. Three signs have been constructed to date. The sign will have eight total message slots, one every 10 seconds, and the city will maintain one slot for city messages at all times. The city will also control one slot on an ASpace available scenario, which would be utilized for other community partner messages. The city message slots will be used for emergency announcements, amber alerts, and event promotion. The other six to seven messages will be open for sold advertisement space by the petitioner as allowed by the approved and amended agreement. The stone base will be constructed with similar block masonry to the existing monuments, and will receive landscaping around the base as per the previously approved plan. The proposed signage will be located outside the vehicular traffic visibility triangle and will not create a nuisance to the area. The petitioner will be responsible for the upkeep and maintenance of the sign and the sign area, and that concludes the staff report. And staff is recommending no conditions with this approval.
Ms. Powell, at our last meeting, requested some action on ordinance regulating the timing on some of the signs that, not necessarily related to this petition, but has any action been taken on that?
You know, Kendall is off on vacation. I wish you were here to answer that question. I know he's been working on it.
He's been working on it.
With these signs, though, the flip is one.
Jim, do you have any comments on that?
One every 10 seconds, but I think the concern was the changeable message board on Michael.
Some of them reflect every two seconds, some of them are eight seconds.
Correct.
There should be a consistent.
Kendall researched it with the state, and he found that it's every 10 seconds is what they require.
Is that what they've decided, is there going to be an ordinance created, or?
I don't know, we just might adopt that.
Would that be grandfathered back, or is that just on future?
These are not like that, like.
Yeah, I know, these are separate, yeah.
And his is all based on the agreement that was previously approved.
Yeah, that's, I realize that, yeah.
But we can put those in as future conditions of.
But they aren't working on it.
Any other signs that.
Okay, fine, thank you. Do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
I do.
And your name and address.
Rod Hirsch, 2131 Snow Creek Road, Naperville, Illinois.
Gee, it never changes, you just don't move around much. Any comments you'd like to make?
Nope, it's been covered, I believe.
Okay, any questions or comments by the board? We have a longstanding agreement with them. Any questions? Anybody in the audience wish to speak in favor? Anyone opposed? Chair closes petition, asks the board for discussion and a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve. Call the board, please.
Mr. Ferguson?
Aye.
Mr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Ms. Darley?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, under old business, we have petition 201511, American Tower.
Is there any representatives here from American Tower? All right, in this case, we've got the owner being George Byrne Charles Sharp, the location is 844 Campus Drive. The request is special use permit and a variation of use. The purpose is the petitioner's requesting a special use permit and a variation of use in order to install 100-foot-high stealth American flag monopole tower in an antenna for T-Mobile. It's a B3 to general business use and an RB restricted business zoning. This, it's an 8.5-acre site, it's currently zoned to restricted business, it's undeveloped. Surrounding land use and zoning is to the north residential R2 and R4, to the south is commercial B1, to the east is residential R4, to the west is office with an RB. We're dealing with applicable regulations 4717.132A, letter B, special uses in the B3, and then 4717.28, the variation of uses. The Community Design Review Board looked at this on May the 7th, the minutes are available. T-Mobile has concluded that they need a site for their telecommunications service in the subject area. American Tower has been engaged by T-Mobile to construct, own and operate the infrastructure upon which they desire to locate their equipment in the area, and as a result, has found at this site and is proposing the 100-foot monopole tower in the subject application. The facility will consist of a stealth tower that includes a large American flag and an internal arrays, no outside mounted equipment. Associated coaxial cable runs down the inside of the tower to the equipment shelter at the tower's base, and that is 51-foot-by-75-foot fence compound area as shown in the enclosed drawings. There will be ample space within the tower and inside the fenced area for additional users. The petitioner is proposing to surround the compound with a six-foot-high chain link fence, three strands of barbed wire. They're also proposing a new gravel drive off campus drive to access the new site. If approved, staff would recommend that the gravel drive be paved as per the requirements of the Public Works Department. According to the petitioner, T-Mobile radio frequency engineers have determined a need in the area for better in-building coverage and have found no suitable co-location options. The monopole installation and the antenna system are required to operate within accordance of the FAA and FCC regulations and should not impact or interfere with other electronic devices such as radios, televisions, or emergency antenna or other devices. Furthermore, the installation of the new tower and the equipment will not have an impact on the health, safety of the surrounding residents. And then lastly, if this were to be approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals, we're requesting two things, that the proposed drive be paved as required by the city's public works and the regulations, and then secondly, that the applicant must post a bond in the amount of $30,000 total prior to the issuance of the building permit for the proposed work. The bond will be utilized for the removal of the tower, the antenna, or the equipment associated with the applicant in a, in case of a future abandonment, and that concludes the staff report.
Thank you. Pay attention. Do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
Yes, I do.
Name and address, and speak up, please.
Virginia Ross, 319 Dear Glenn Way, Bloomingdale, Illinois.
Okay, now, far, we, this has been tabled from the last meeting, so I'm gonna ask a simple question. What has changed since then that we weren't told at the last meeting without the technical knowledge that was stated?
Well...
I think that the argument was, is this the best location?
Jim, if you're gonna do it, go up to the, go up to the microphone so we can get it on the recording.
I don't wanna go through the whole debate again, I just wanna know what's changed.
Nothing really has changed. They, their RF tech has said that the one antenna that's being proposed near this on Essington Road, if they located there, they'd have interference with the other antenna north of Essington Road, I think it's on the Thornton's Gas Station site. We don't, we don't have an RF on staff, so that is what they've told us. So that is what we're presenting to you, that, you know, this is what we're told, that they need this, they need the site here.
This is the best location for it as opposed to another one.
Another service in the area. The antenna that we were proposing would not work for them, so...
And we're accepting that.
We don't have a technical person on staff to refuse, so that's what we have to go by their, you know, that they're telling us the truth, and, you know, we don't like it for aesthetic purposes, so it comes down to, you know, better cellular service in the area.
Well, we're arguing aesthetics against the practical application of its purpose, which is to give the product's possible coverage.
Right.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Any comments you'd like to make, no?
No.
Because we've had the presentation from last week, okay. Are there any questions by the board? Go ahead.
Who is responsible for upkeep of the American flag, and how often would it be inspected?
American Tower? I... As necessary, it would be inspected.
Do you have a contract with them to maintain that? What, are you worried about desecration of the flag, or what?
Exactly, exactly, I am.
And illumination as well.
We, we don't have the details for that. I don't, we don't have a contract.
Do you have other towers of the sort that, that have the American flag on them?
They do, yes, American Tower does, yes.
Okay, and has there been an issue with maintaining the flags?
No, I don't believe there's been any issue.
Are they lit at night? That's another question.
No.
I think by law, they're supposed to be. You guys wanna check that out and maintain that?
If it's up at night, it's supposed to be lit. You're, you're correct.
Huh?
You're correct.
It is supposed to be lit, right? All, all the time, so, so I guess Ms. Darley's questions are, are we in complete accord with this, with law in regards to the treatment of the flag? Is it maintained and is it lit at night?
Would that be a condition?
I don't know if that's mundane to the question of whether we're gonna do it or not, but it's something to consider.
We can also place the pole without a flag if you prefer.
Well, we can make that a condition, Ms. Darley, if you want to, if this passes, okay? Any other comments by the board?
A question from Ms. Ross. Is this tower also open for co-occupancy with other servers?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor? Opposed? You were concerned about the safety, I believe, right?
Yes, I have some other comments.
Okay. You swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
Yes.
Your name and address?
Christopher Stathos, 2701 Campus Drive, Joliet, Illinois. Another concern I was gonna address is construction access to, to construct this tower. Obviously, it's through Campus Drive, the road impact, the impact on the road, what is the weight limits, capacity of, of the structure, the pavement, and what is the weight, gross weight of the crane that would be erecting the tower and the construction equipment? In other words, how is this gonna impact the road, and who's gonna pay for any immediate or future damage to the, to the roadway? Right now, under Joliet procedure, the current landowner, property owners pay for a portion of the, the pavement, but if a construction company comes in and desecrates the pavement, who's gonna pay?
What kind of equipment is, is required to put up one of these things? I mean, we're not talking about monstrous trucks coming up and down. They're just, that thing's brought in, what, in pieces and then assembled?
It would still have to be some sort of rigging that can reach 100, 100 feet.
Well, I'm not a construction engineer, I don't have any answer for that.
And so the question is, yes, what is, what would be the gross weight of the vehicles coming in to construct this, this...
Well, what's your experience been in other towers that you've developed and built? Has there ever been any problems? Any damage to roads or anything?
No, generally pieces of their hulls, yeah, so it would be as much as a solid tower.
Staff have any comments on this?
You know, I really don't. I, I, I just...
I mean, this is all just speculative question, it's probably no answer to it.
Illinois law provides that the maximum weight is 80,000 pounds.
Which would be more than adequate to handle any pieces coming in for this tower, I would think.
There is a bond to protect that, too, right? The bond that they would be putting on the tower?
It probably would be.
I would hope there would be some sort of construction bond that would cover any damage during construction. Also, I belong to the Campus Courtyard Homeowners Association, and our requirements are to take down holiday decorations in a certain amount of time, bring our garbage cans off the curb in a certain amount of time, maintain our facades, just like Joliet ordinances require facade matching, and to erect a 100-foot tower within 200 feet of homeowners association that has strict standards would not be in keeping with, with the residents and, and basically the principles of a zoning board in a municipality. It, 100-foot tower is, is unsightly, and to put it in, in a residential, half-residential area and to adopt a B3 zoning just to accommodate a tower then development of an eight-acre parcel, that's basically an island between residential and restricted business. That should be part of the consideration also.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Chair closes petition to the floor and asks the board for discussion and a motion.
Motion to approve with the, and with the flag being maintained and lit, and there is already one of the conditions, is a $30,000 bond upon getting the building permit for the property.
That's correct. Is there a second?
Second.
We have motion second to approve the petition. Call the roll, please.
Ms. Darley?
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson?
Aye.
Mr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, where are we here? Revocation of petition 2013-06.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, in this case, we're dealing with, the applicant would be the Citya Joliet, the, the agency bringing this action. The petitioner was Herbert, Herberto Gonzalez Ruiz. The owner is Lou Anne Kinney. The location is 101 North Center Street. The request is to repeal a special use permit to allow used car lot for up to 10 cars. Under new information, the property was declared a public nuisance at an administrative hearing held on April the 28th, 2015. The tenant was found to be non-compliant with the required conditions of approval of the special use permit granted by the city council back in December of 2014. Accordingly, the administration requests the special use permit be repealed. Under background, the conditions of the approval of that petition included but are not limited to the following, that the number of vehicles for sale not exceed 10 at any time, and that site improvements conform to the submitted landscape plan. Petition 2013-06 staff report and meeting minutes are attached. At the present time, the tenant Car Credit Incorporated routinely, routinely has 15 to 18 vehicles on display, including a vehicle with dealer plates recently observed parked in the handicap parking stall. In addition to the vehicle parking issues, landscape material provided in the perimeter planters does not meet the minimum landscape standards. Landscaping materials should consist of live air green or deciduous shrubs, perennial plants, and annual or perennial flowers. Artificial plants or flowers are not included as permitted planted landscaping material according to the zoning ordinance. The tenant and the property owner have been notified of this proposed repeal, and I believe that concludes our staff report.
Thank you. Fickers? Do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
Yes.
And your names and addresses, please.
Lou Anne Kinney, 712 Lois Place, Joliet, Illinois.
Hey, Roberto Gonzalez, 2413 Goodrich, Illinois.
Are you the operator of the, call it, okay. This request by the city has come about due to what, how many, have we had inspections and what?
Yeah, we've had ongoing, ongoing inspections and ongoing complaints from council members and, and general public. They realized and remembered back when we did this, we did 10 cars is the maximum limit, and on any given day, we've, we've checked, everybody driving by checks. It seems like numerous parties and people report in and say he, you know, he's way above what was originally approved, and...
Are these coming from the same people, or is it...
It's been staff, it's been elected officials, it's been general public, so we're getting it from a lot of different, different folks who, who remember what the condition was when first granted. It seems like a lot of people remembered what the condition was, except the operator.
My question to the petitioner is...
My hearing's a little bad, so you might have to speak up. You know, I've owned that lot.
The last time we were here, your, your tenant stated that he was gonna be renting of what was the old Borden Building that you owned.
Yes, that's what I was just gonna mention.
Install some of his cars in there to alleviate the number of cars that were on the used car lot.
Correct, correct.
Has that, have you, has that been done?
Let me just say, he has had 15, 16 cars. The lot is big enough for that, but now they're gonna have to go see and get it approved for more. But in other words, I will see, and you know me, if I say I will see that there's going to be only 10 to 12 cars, because there's places for their customers' cars, they've got a spot for a handicap, and you're right, they did have a car parked on that handicap spot, it will no longer, and it's no longer there, and they're down to 12 cars today, beautiful. And in other words, I will see that it gets down to the 10. You know, they pay a big amount of rent, the city makes money off of their taxes, we don't need another empty spot. We lost Tysons, we lost Ford, because of all your rules, they moved to, out of town. I'm not gonna let them go down, I don't want you, just ask, I'm asking you to give them additional time, they'll get that down to the 10 cars tomorrow or the next day, they'll get flowers in there. I never heard of telling them what kind of flowers they have to have. Kendall told me yesterday what kind, but that's all right, we'll get them done. But I mean, all I know is, I've been in business for 70 years here. No, I'm 82 now yesterday. But I mean, we're not here to give you problems, and they're not here. They don't, they speak Spanish, and sometimes they didn't understand what she was asking one time on that dealer plate, when it was there, was the car for sale, they didn't understand. It wasn't ready for sale is what they meant, it had to be fixed. So they'll get that done, they're down to 10 cars, or 12 at the max right now, and I'll, I'll see that it gets down to 10.
Why, why hasn't he complied with it up till now?
Pardon me?
I mean, it, it's been a while since he, he was told that it could only be 10 cars, why hasn't he complied with that? I mean, especially after he rented, you know, the, the Borden Building where he could store additional cars.
We just put more cars, you know, like, uh, because we have a lot of expenses, you know, and then I can afford...
I can't hear you speak up.
I can afford it to make like up to 10 cars in the lot, so, because I have a lot of expenses, you know, rents, hey, too much. If we put a couple cars more, I mean, if it's an issue, so I can remove, and then I can amend it to more cars in the lot.
Also, I'd like to know who is complaining about it? Nobody has ever said one word to me. You know, I'm well-known in Joliet, and whoever put that in the Herald News was wrong the other day. You haven't even had, had a meeting yet, and here it's in the Herald News, and someone told me it was on WGN. What in the world are we doing to Joliet?
What was in the Herald News?
Pardon me?
What was in the Herald News?
All about what you're talking about today, and about, you know, they got too many cars, the neighbors are complaining. Not one neighbor has ever said anything to me, and I walked out at the mall every day, and about 10 people came up and said, Lou, what in the world's...
We're talking about neighbors in the area of the, of the, of the, we're talking about neighbors in the area of the used car lot.
Yeah, and they've never, they've never come to me, and they haven't come to you, have they?
They don't, they come to us.
No, so I don't...
I don't, I don't know who made the complaints either.
Who put two O's in that?
Charlie, go ahead.
When the petitioner was in here for the second building to alleviate some of the issues with the overstocked cars at this corner, I personally asked him if he understood the conditions of the first variance, that he was only allowed 10 cars, and he, under oath, said that he did understand that, and that is why primarily we allowed the other building to be approved because it would seem to alleviate the problem at this site here. I drive by there every day, I am a neighbor, it has not ever been in compliance with the approval, the original approval of 10 cars. There are a lot of, I get calls myself, I have personally asked the staff to look into this, because I know, I was on the board when this was originally approved, I know what the conditions were as far as the landscaping and the cars there. It is not safe to have that many vehicles there. There are two, there's an entrance, exit on both sides, there's never been access to the second one as far as getting in and out of the, the lot. It's not safe to have that many cars, and that is why we only allowed 10 cars there in the first place. There are a lot of people that have complained. I personally did not know who owned it, so I went to city staff as other people do because that is the process that neighbors have been told to utilize.
You know, maybe you haven't been here as long as I have. We ran Kenny Motors there for 60 years, and we sold it to Wendy's. Wendy's haven't said anything about it, and, and we have old Charlie's down there, they haven't complained. I have Kinshaw down there, we haven't complained. I don't know who's complaining, I would like to know because we'd like to straighten it out with them. But we will see that they only have 10 cars. They probably have seven or eight cars in the Borden Building over, and what Kendall Jackson said, put them over in the other building, he told me this yesterday, put them in the other building, take pictures of them, put them up on the wall if you want, then if they'd like to see that car, go get it and bring it down. But they will abide by that 10 cars. But as far as the flowers, no other dealer has had to put flowers up, but that's fine, we got them, we bought the bases years ago, so we'll get the flowers in there for you. I do have some small evergreens, but they want a certain type of a flower, I never heard of such thing, but we will get the flowers. He wants some kind of, what'd he say, David? Huh? Lily's in it, so we'll try to get the lilies. But all I want today is you to reconsider... Pardon me?
I don't know, would the board consider giving them 30 days to comply?
Yeah.
Or, I don't know, whatever the board's discretion is, I don't know.
And, and quite honestly, what this says is that if it's declared a public nuisance, which it was, there is, it's subject to a possible revocation or rehearing, so that's what you're considering now, so you have the ability to do whatever you'd like.
Rebecca, would you consider a 30-day grace period?
I, I do believe that the conditions were understood and reiterated and understood. If, if somebody wants to make that motion, I will not object to it.
Who gave the Herald...
You know, it's been a continuing problem, and I agree with everything Ms. Darley has said, but there again, I don't like seeing any business shut down with, with the economics being what they are. If he doesn't comply and maintain that compliance past the 30-days grace period, if, if that is granted, then I would say then it should be closed down.
I've got pictures that they're down to 12, and I'll see that they get down to 10, and put them in the other building.
So it's up to, I'm gonna, is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak in favor or in opposition? So I'm gonna leave it up to the board and their discretion to make a motion either to close it down or to give them a 30-day grace period to comply.
I'll make a motion to give them a 30-day grace period. I actually rented a space from Ms. Kenny in the past, and I know how strict she can be, so I think we should give her, if nothing else, the chance to see that she gives, get or corrects him in his situation. or corrects him in his situation. So my motion will be to allow her to stay for 30 days for it to be monitored and complete it.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second it, but I also like to make a comment. I don't mind giving somebody a chance, whether it be Mr. Ruiz, or IKEA, or Cadence or anybody, but when they say something, I expect them to follow up with it.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, and it's a very visible location. I drive past it every day, too, and I live about a block away, so I'll be watching, too.
Good.
All right?
Be my guest.
And I'll second it.
We have a motion to second to grant a 30-day grace period and then bring it up for reconsideration at the next scheduled meeting.
Do we come back in the 30 days? I don't know.
If I were you, I would. So, we have a motion to second to grant that. Calls the roll.
Mr. Ferguson?
Aye.
Mr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Ms. Darley?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye. It's in your corner now, Lou. Make sure you follow through.
You know me, I'll follow through, or I'll break their lease.
The motion would be in order to approve the minutes of the last meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion would be in order to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, we extend an invitation for those of you.